Any other things going on in the development? This is just a basic grant. It has, it's new. It has no, has no purpose. We're just separating it based on this rule of law. You will follow the rule of law or the I C codes in the I C code or their codes, vehicle codes. And we're saying they meet that to a certain standard, but to move forward, we would ask these things to be achieved first. He says that all can, which means there are other things we'd rather do before this could be moved forward.
We'll call the August meeting of the area planning commission to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ryan Baker.
Present.
Kevin Beaver.
Here.
Deborah Carter.
Here.
James Crisman. Terry Clark. Mark Kleikenbeard.
Here.
John Collett.
Here.
Norm Froderman. Don Fult.
Present.
John Hanley.
Here.
Marcus Mauer.
There.
Debbie May.
Here.
Amanda Thompson.
Here.
William Verdine.
We do have a quorum. Could I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America under the principle of liberty and justice for all.
I assume everyone's had an opportunity to review the amendments from the previous meeting as well as the status report. Any corrections or comments on those?
Motion approved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
I think we have one administrative approval, this pending health department approval.
Correct.
Okay. No action necessary on that. No other communications received other than what we have in front of us for agenda items?
Correct.
Okay. Executive Director's report.
Good evening. You got mine and Sidney's reports in your packets this month. A quick update, what you have there in front of you, three different handouts. One is an updated general ordinance number four as a result of some changes we suggested that came out of the ordinance committee meeting, which you have the minutes for in front of you there as well. And we also have Sidney's bullet points for the flood plane, or the flood control ordinance, which she'll be speaking to after a bit. Also wanted to comment real quickly on the change in the appearance of the agenda. You may have noticed there on page three, we've now started including members, the terms, expiration dates. This is something that we've been required to do by the state. So this is a permanent addition to that, that we're now required to put on.
Sidney?
You'll hear a lot from me. We're in the near future with the flood plane ordinance, but I included my report of the first six months of flood plane permits. It's always interesting to see what kind of development and how much development happens in the flood planes because we do have quite a large proportion of the county in the flood plane.
Okay. Anyone on the planning commission have any questions for our director or assistant director? Not all entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
So it looks like the first item on the agenda is new, under new business subdivisions, minor, primary, secondary, docket number fifty-three, file number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five, fourteen and a half subdivision.
The property is commonly associated with forty-two seventy-five North Fourteenth and a Half Street. Point two-nine acres, surveyors, Mr. Little. The request is to subdivide the parent tract adding one new lot at this location. Health department has approved a sanitary sewer is available. Public water is not available. Lot exceeds the minimum lot size requirement. No new proposed public streets. Areas well served with other utilities. This is a major subdivision due to the number of lots created from the parent tract over time. Due to the size and intended use of the property, staff would request a waiver of the major subdivision rules in favor of the minor subdivision rules. Staff stood the opinion that the addition of new residents at this location would not serve to overburden the infrastructure. There is an existing well on the new lot. It's uncertain if this well serves the existing home. If so, then an easement will need to be added across to the new lot. We do offer favorable in the primary and secondary with a road cut permit if needed, drainage and erosion control plan approval if needed, bonding for infrastructure if needed, and then recorded within ninety days.
Vince, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions for the petitioner? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this proposal?
I'm making a motion to approve first step of the petition.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under new business subdivisions, major, primary, secondary, docket number fifty-four, file number thirty, two thousand twenty-five, Shiv Dia.
So the property is commonly associated with fifty-five, five fifty-five South Third Street. More specifically, it's the parking area south of the building and north of six oh one West Third Street. Half of an acre, surveyors, Mr. Werner. The request is to subdivide the half acre for a Dutch Brothers drive-through coffin chain. Health department has approved a sanitary sewer is available. Public water is available. It's not flood zone. Lot does exceed the minimum lot size requirement. No new proposed public streets. The location may be able to use existing drive cuts. Any new drive cuts will need indot approval. All utilities are available at the location. The site plan will need to meet city and town engineering approval, including a rezoning if needed. We offered a favorable on the primary and secondary with the following: road cut permit from indot if necessary, drainage and erosion control plan approval, bonding for infrastructure if needed, recorded within ninety days of approval of a site plan by city engineering.
Is the petitioner present?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything you'd like to add to?
I don't know. I'm getting new curfew. I don't know.
Okay.
And just power doorway through our land.
Okay.
We're in the building, so we are to be able to submit it on Friday. We're looking to do a few.
Okay. Yeah. Any questions from anyone on the planning commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this proposal? Not all entertain a motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under new business subdivisions, major, primary, secondary, docket number fifty-five, file number thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five, a replat of the north half lot, twenty-seven to twenty-nine, and south half lot, thirty.
So the property is just north of the property, commonly associated with twenty-four sixty-six North Baker Street in the town of Seaville. Point five-eight acres, surveyors, Mr. Campbell. The request is to replat portions or whole of four lots creating two new lots. Health department has approved a sanitary sewer is available. Public water is available. The lots do not exceed the minimum lot size. No new public streets with this. Areas well served with utilities. Stormwater drainage is required with major subdivisions. However, the addition of new home or new homes should not dramatically alter the current drainage plan. Border zoning approval, border zoning appeals approval for a reduction in the minimum lot size is required. So it's that section eleven oh one C, which requires twenty thousand square feet for a minimum lot size and an R S zoning. New homes in this area should not prove to overburden the local infrastructure and is in keeping with the block and development pattern. Outside of the minimum lot size needing border zoning appeals approval, staff foresees no other issues with the request. So we did offer a favorable on the primary and secondary with a drainage and erosion control plan waiver. And I didn't know whether that one, you wanted to come from this body or you wanted it directed to the town board of Seaville. Either way would be acceptable.
Okay.
Bonding for infrastructure, if town board deems it necessary, recorded within ninety days, and the border zoning appeals relief from the minimum lot size requirement and an R S zoning.
Okay. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything you need to add to what staff's report is? Okay. Any questions from the planning commission? What's your pleasure on the, I mean, I think we're okay, aren't we?
I have a feeling we come back to county engineering for approval.
Right. I would think so, too.
In which case I would say this body would be sufficient.
Appropriate.
Be appropriate.
Okay. I agree. Is there anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? We entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under new business, docket number fifty-six, file number thirty-two dash twenty twenty-five, Hicks, sub two.
So the property is immediately west and south of the petitioner's property, commonly known as sixty-nine ninety-eight, sixty-nine eighty-five, East Rio Grande Avenue. Eighteen point two-two acres, surveyors, Mr. Keller. The request is to subdivide seventeen point seven-two acres, creating two new lots and replating one in Hicks subdivision. Health department has approved, however, they have requested that the plan indicate the drainage easement be in favor of lot one A. Sanitary sewer is not available. Public water is available. It's not in the flood zone. Lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. Of course, it is served with other utilities. A variance of scale has been requested. The petitioner providing assurances that the plan remains legible with the change. Staff is of the opinion that the requested variance will not be injurious to the public health, safety, morals, convenience, or general welfare of the community. The value of the area adjacent to the property included in the variance will not be affected in a substantially adverse manner. The strict applications of the terms of the ordinance have resulted in an unnecessary hardship, excluding financial reasons in the use of the property. Therefore, staff offers, staff recommends favorably on the variance request. The plot does create a twenty-foot easement between lots one A and lot one for access to lot one B. One B already has a home lot. This is a major subdivision due to the number of lots created from the parent tract over time. Due to the size and intended use of the property, staff would request a waiver of the major subdivision rules in favor of the minor subdivision rules. So we offer favorable on the primary and secondary with bonding for infrastructure if needed. It does need to be recorded within ninety days, and then that one minor plat.
Okay. Is the petitioner present? Anything you'd like to add to staff's report?
No.
Good. Any questions from the petitioner from the planning commission?
I do.
Sure.
I guess in the one sentence, I wondered why the word, the value shouldn't, shouldn't be affected very subs, should be substantially adverse manner. Substantially means quite a bit. Is there a concern of value, price, decreased value by doing this?
No, that's why we offered favorably on the variance request.
And the water movement issue isn't a, isn't a concern that it doesn't flow well and is could be wet and common?
Likely, yeah.
But these are big enough lots?
These are big enough. The, the drainage, okay, are you, are you speaking about the, the health department request? Was that the question?
Well, I was questioning substantially adversely. That doesn't, that says it could be, it could reduce the value of the property, but this is saying it shouldn't substantially do. And I guess that was worrying. But then the perk, the slow perk, and the flooding, the ponding issues that can happen. So that's, that was, they were my concerns.
Okay. Those were our, our primary concerns of the health department and the ability of a septic system to function at that location. To answer those concerns, the petitioner has, they put in an easement for drainage so that the septic system will function properly? And that's what that easement that the health department is referring to in favor of the north lot over the south lot? So that that north lot has assurances that that septic system will function adequately throughout the life of the, of the system?
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else from the planning commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request?
I'm making a motion to approve first step of recognition and health department request the change of the paper plot.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under new business subdivisions, major, primary, secondary, docket number fifty-seven, file number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-five, Sycamore Storage, two lot.
So this property is commonly associated with thirty-four fifty Locust Street and is the current home of storage units. It's three point eight acres, surveyors, Mr. White. Request is to subdivide the parent tract of three point eight acres, creating two lots of equal size. Health department has approved a sanitary sewer is available. Public water is available. It's not in the flood zone. Lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. There'll be no new public streets with this. Areas well served with other, other utilities. Access to lot one is via a private easement. No plans have been provided for lot two. The petition indicates that it will be for sale. Any future development on lot two will need city of Terre Haute engineering approvals. A rezoning will be necessary for lot one. Storage units in the city are a C five zoning. The undeveloped lot will not necessarily need to be rezoned at this time, but may need rezoning depending on the future use. So we offered a favorable on the primary and secondary with the following needed prior to recording. Bonding for infrastructure if required, of course, has to be reported in ninety days, and the rezoning of lot one. And then prior to permitting, a commercial road cut permit, drainage and erosion control approval, as well as site plan review and approval.
Okay. Clint, do you have anything you needed to add to that?
Nope.
Okay. Any questions from the planning commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? Not all entertain a motion.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under new business subdivisions, major, primary, secondary, docket number fifty-eight, file number thirty-four, two thousand twenty-five, Harding Avenue, two lot.
So the property is the southeast corner of the intersection of Helen and Harding Avenues, point three-five-six acres, surveyors, Mr. White. The request is to subdivide the parent tract into two lots for the sale of lot one. Health department has approved a sanitary sewer is available. Public water is available. It's not in the flood zone. Lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. The area is well served with utilities. The prospective buyer of lot one will need to choose carefully, as many uses permitted under the C two have a fifty-foot setback from any street. That large of setback effectively eliminates the buildable area. Drive cuts will also need to be a minimum of fifty feet from the street intersection. Like all commercial developments, hard surface parking, stormwater drainage, and lighting will be, need to be considered. We offered a favorable on the primary and secondary with the following needed prior to permitting. Drainage and erosion control plan, bonding for infrastructure if needed, as well as a site plan approval.
Okay. Clint, guy, you need to add to that?
Nope.
Any questions from the planning commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this? Not all entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under new business, county rezonings, docket number sixty, U Z O number thirteen, two thousand twenty-five, three five eight six, South State Road sixty-three, from an R T, R S, and A one to C two, Community Commercial District.
So the, the property is as indicated, thirty-five eight six, South State Road sixty-three, as well as an address that was assigned to eleven hundred West Johnson Drive. The property owner is Indiana Ecumenical Center, Center of Terre Haute, who proposed a C two Community Commercial District to be zoned, rezoning it from R S Single Family Residential, as well as R T Mobile Home Trailer Park, as well as A one Agricultural District for the proposed use of a religious use and assembly hall. The area is identified as suburban residential in guidance, guidance. However, this area has had an increase in commercial development. Public amenities are available at this location. Surrounding uses to the north, A one and R T. South is R S and A one. And the west is O one, which is open space into the east, C seven. The property does contain multiple zoning classifications. These are remnants from past uses or original zoning. The proposal is to rezone the entire property for a religious use temple with accessory uses and a meeting hall. An area to the south, still on the same property, is identified for future development. The site plan does depict an ingress egress access point on Johnson Drive. The further east that public access point can be, the safer it will be. The property contains two existing drive cuts off Johnson and then one off State Road sixty-three. Only the furthest east of these would meet the current standards for minimum distance from the intersection. The property owner has adjusted some lot lines to accommodate the proper, the proposed development. Hard surface parking will be required. Parking is indicated on the plan, but it is unknown if enough parking is available. The requirement is one spot per four seats at maximum calculated capacity for religious uses. A stormwater drainage plan will need to be approved. Landscape and buffer plans will need to be approved for residential adjoints. The site plan does depict a priest building. It will need to be moved back into the property to meet the required setbacks for a C two, which is thirty feet from South State Road sixty-three and twenty feet of a buffer from the residential zoning to the south. Religious uses can fit in most zoning districts. This particular zoning was chosen to accommodate the meeting hall and to match the development pattern of this part of the county. We don't offer favorable on the C two Community Commercial District rezoning requests with Eagle County Engineering approval for stormwater drainage plan, approval from indot or Eagle County Engineering for the drive cut design and location, as well as the site plan.
Is the petitioner present?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to speak to the issue? Or do you have anything you'd like to add, or?
If you have any questions, I'll have that.
Okay. Anybody, anyone on the planning commission have any questions about this request? Satan, is there, is there anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? Satan, all entertain a motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under new business, city county general ordinance, docket number fifty-two, general ordinance number four, two thousand twenty-five, amending the Terre Haute City Code, Chapter ten, Article four, registries and registration, Division one, rental property registration and inspections.
So the, you have in front of you a, an amended version of the ordinance. There were two requests that I will address in the staff findings that the ordinance committee wanted addressed in the amended ordinance, and so those have been changed and are in the new amended ordinance that you guys have. General ordinance number four is an amendment to Terre Haute City Code, Chapter ten, Article four, registries and registration, Division one, rental property registration and inspections. The purpose of the code is to provide minimum housing standards for all rental properties to production of life, limb, health, environment, public safety, and welfare, and ensure all rental properties meet minimum property standards for all rental slash leases within this chapter in city code. The registry will be through an online portal that property owners and/or managers will be able to access. The cost is five dollars annually for each rental unit or rental unit community. With the ordinance, the city is hopeful to prevent more condemnations and give property owners and managers an opportunity to make required repairs. It will also promote rental properties to meet minimum property living standards. So the ordinance committee did request to define a major violation and to delete a portion about a warrant because it was redundant to the process. And the committee did provide a favorable recommendation.
Marcus, do you want to give us our respect?
I guess I'm the petitioner.
You're the petitioner?
I think the city did a great job in covering it. What led us to get here is a lot of obstacles in the years and problems that we didn't have a solution for or couldn't find the person to contact and find a solution for. A lot of homes that end up following this path ultimately being, and be a burden on the city and ultimately taxpayers. Paramount, as she already mentioned, will ensure everyone has safe living conditions. We have a lot of sad stories coming up, so we're positioned to, right now, we have the option to build a house or do nothing. It puts us in a position where somebody calls us with unsafe living condition, and our option is to do nothing or make their home. People don't have it.
Right.
It's a hard spot to be in. We feel that this is a good solution to solve that. In addition to that, I think we're going to see some more benefits. We're going to learn more about what the community needs are. We're going to learn more about where different types of housing, different uses are in the city. It's going to allow us to hopefully solve more problems in the planning framework
Any questions, comments from anyone on the planning commission?
Sure.
So, if there's a apartment complex, five dollars.
Good question.
So, by the company that owns fifty rentals in town that aren't together, could we send back homes and about five dollars in cash? That is correct. So we follow the state, state length of that and find the rental communities, five or more units. And there's some reason behind that as we potentially go through inspections, there would be more record keeping. Forty units in one building could just be, one unit. Was that? We have a department that we pay a tax on. Still, I mean, it's also a priority business. See, we have a building inspection department, but we don't have the information to be able to force or somebody to truly force. Is this, this ordinance goes hand in hand with another ordinance? Not here tonight, but it's going to be in front of city council tomorrow night, which is property maintenance ordinance, which follows the same line. We're setting the basic standard of living conditions to fill that gap where we have the do-nothing with them houses. Our goal is to slow the, slower, hopefully stop, you know, spiral of some of these properties get into and ultimately end up being unsafe. So code enforcement, we do stuff outside, you know, trash yard. We don't have a good process for building itself. And that's what we're hoping to establish with these two ordinances. And it's, you know, it's a lot of maintenance work. It's going to apply to all buildings within the city of Terre Haute, not just rentals. The key to this one is really just a database. So the property maintenance is going to be moved on quickly, so we're not chasing down people who can't find contact information and don't have a good way, then they'll return and contact. Last thing we're going to do is get home because something, minor was unsafe, but we couldn't get a hold of someone because it was impossible, they were out of town. All we have is a D O box. It's a pretty common problem we have. We try to find some of those. I think that we have a lot of responsible landlords, property owners in town. It's a thing that them realize they'll be paying the five dollar fee. This would be.
I'm opposed to asking. I'd like to pay taxes, but I'm also opposed to government. But I understand why you want to do it. You just want to residential housing. Because that's the way this reaches, just because it's a people that live there, something that's happened on an office.
That's correct. Since this would just be housing, as far as a big concern is, we're living in unsafe conditions. We have a lot of home balls, a lot of problems that we can't help with. We really want to. So this was kind of our way of trying to find a way to do that. I want to be able to tell the mission and also have this property maintenance ordinance. Problem solved, make sure there are safe houses. And also, maybe there are not some issues that are ongoing that may not be safe right now, but clearly is heading downhill. You know, we're going to see a car run through for two, three years. That place needs to, they should be running that building, making money while they're not maintaining it. Do that. What's that? Well, that would fall, that would fall, for instance, on the property maintenance side.
I mean, I'm asking, so if I own my own house. Well, your insurance company will probably not insure you if it gets that bad.
Property maintenance side.
On a personal level.
If, if you're not, again, we're just looking for the basic standards of living. We're not, you have to say, hey.
I discovered a set of rules out there. This has to be done this way. This has to be clean. We have a lot, I own a lot of rental property in the city, that's why I'm asking the question. We have a lot, we take care of the property, but we have a lot of things that might not always be the landlord. I, I can, we make it look really pretty outside, but when I go in and see how they live, that's something I can just go in and recognize that.
And after meeting with the Terre Haute Association, Area Realtors, I think it's backwards. You know, it's a pretty large group. One of ours there, he was a P driver. And after we, then we did add some language that included, you know, included, in the event, we see a caller for, a caller with intent, but clearly that caused a problem. They're trying to depend on property owner if they make any violations.
So, so there's a little bit of recognition or?
It's two-sided. We see a lot of houses, generally, it's not that hard to tell who's at fault. I think you probably agree with that.
I don't want to be, you know.
But, you know, the lack of maintenance versus the lack of counseling are two different pictures.
That's not what we're doing today.
No, well, this gives us, yeah, this, this is essentially the database that's going to go along the back.
Right.
This does give us the authority to make inspections. I will note, we're not doing annual inspections. We're going to do plain-based inspections unless the property owner falls in category of having multiple major violations within a year, then we do have the right to make an inspection on their annual. a year, then we do have the right to make an inspection on their annual renewal. That's gonna be a pretty significant problem. We defined that and we've got that in order, I think we've mentioned, we've mentioned where they had to have two very much immediate repairs, where they get shorter than standard timeline, because it's, it's red.
So, what's to say, I, we can pass this and agree, next year, say, we're gonna charge you five dollars, you're gonna charge me five dollars.
We are opposite. We are following state law, state law maximum. It doesn't cover our costs, but.
Again, I'm not upset about that, I, I don't not agree, I just trying to ask a question. I think it's kind of like the sort of this thing we had last conference, getting those open rules and then to say, you can't, I can't, you know, say they're okay.
All right, so the fee will not go up because it's, or like I said, long. We can, with that five dollars for five years.
You mean, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a flood of calls?
You're not be overwhelmed by people. We already, we already get a lot of those calls.
Yeah, but now you're making a valid reason for the call, we're just gonna call you for everything.
We understand. Purpose to be controlled by staff, I mean, you know, we're really be able to house as, as many as we can, do it in a staff position, run this property maintenance solely because they're in a position, just though one person can go to, I think, something, something per day, so that's gonna be part of the control factor. Just trying to prove the housing stock, if we exist in homes, even one.
Anyone else? I would, I had a couple of comments after we met, I actually read it, uh, in more detail. One of my questions was making sure that I read it right, and it did not involve, uh, office spaces and it was simply habitable things. I guess the other thing, and I, I appreciate Ryan's concern, it, like a lot of ordinances that we pass, we burden ninety-five percent of the people, we burden, we're always in compliance and will always be compliant, we're trying to take care of the five, and I'm sure that he feels like it. I own no rental real estate, so I don't feel that, but I'm, I'm sure that he does. The, the one thing that sticks out to me, and I don't know whether the state statute allows it, or whether you can conform it later, but it seems, it's, I, uh, I know what you're trying to do, I think the intent's great. Is it, is it possible to not burden this ninety-five percent of the people to do it every year? I mean, it seems like to me, if you have to report a, a purchase or a sale, and you've already have your initial data base for him to have to do that, or Berkshire Hathaway or somebody, you know, eleven hundred and fifty-five times every year, just seems to me an overreaching burden, and I didn't know whether that was even allowed or possible or not.
Goal with, with Daniel, like, we need to kind of affect the work of this too, is we need to make sure we have most of the data, we run into that now, that's a problem we see from permitting software where contractors will call and say, hey, I'm not getting emails about my permits, and tell them who they're going to, it's like, well, he doesn't work here anymore.
Yeah.
And that's a contractor that's there every year, he's coming back, has for years, so we need to have some way there to remind them, and, and not only, basically, which is gonna apply, apply. But that would be our step, to try to make sure the data's updated, and there's a lot that needs to change, and I do, you know, that is a burden.
Right.
Deal with that, or there's, there's a lot to do, so the renewal process should be pretty smooth, pretty simple. We're also working on ways, you mentioned, people who have, you know, a balance of their properties, it's not just the money, it's the time, but it's basically, we're trying to find some ways to make that a faster process.
Sure.
Have some resolutions to that, or, it's kind of long and allowed, that's a mess.
I think that would help. Uh, I mean, I'm certainly not opposed to it, I think what you're trying to do is a good thing, but if, if Ryan had somebody that, you know, that had a screen that was similar to, uh, versus, you know, my B M V, where he just simply went check, 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 you know, or something, but to, to think that you've got a, I don't even know what the form's gonna look like, but to think that he might have to do it eleven hundred or fifteen hundred or two thousand times every year seems, seems to be.
That's a concern we've had.
And maybe you can work on that in the middle later or something.
I think we'll be successful in finding a way to mass import, you know, for those that have safe, only one type of properties.
Right.
It would look like a census spreadsheet, mass import.
I would just say, I, I think I second John's sentiment here. You know, unfortunate, you know, as a small business person, the people will try to do it right, you know? We're making this difficult for the people that are trying to do it right, and it's not about the money, I, I don't put five dollars in anything, but if you have owned a thousand, you have to go, all the time, you gotta spend to do that, or pay somebody to do that. I, I understand the intent, and I, I do wanna make sure we have, you know, that people are living in safe conditions, but that, that does bother me also, and, so.
Well, I, this is, um, we actually, um, as members of city council, started discussing this with the mayor the night we were lucky. That is one of the major things that we saw when we were out campaigning, talking to constituents, majority of people in the city of Terre Haute are renters, they are not homeowners, yet I campaigned that we had homes that were aged, they were seen, and out for months, and they had space heaters, trying to heat them up more, and their, the company that they were writing from, they returned phone calls, and I didn't have an answer, but I had none of them saying, um, it was, you know, blew out and risked that to be the board forgotten to rent, it was illegal options. And we just heard so much of it, it was the overwhelming concern we got. So, when we started looking at other cities, this is what we found, we found the property maintenance code, we found rental registration, and we're not talking about, you know, some, I, I'm not concerned about the companies that owe several hundred rental ordinance at a time that they might have to do this. What I worry about, this majority of our residents in Terre Haute, who are renters, we deserve to know that they would need a safe home, that they are paying their rent to the properties they're paying, and that the city has some recourse to be able to ensure that, that's what our tax dollars are going for. So, um, I'm glad, you know, I'm disappointed that it took us long, but I know Marcus and administration, a lot of work, and we wanted to make sure that that went right, and I feel limited in that, I'm going to see the place.
May I, may I? Absolutely. I have a little concern about how you gain interest to the property. There are people have privacy rights, uh, when you, when you seek to go in and do good work, you also maybe violate some, some money. Where are you protecting the people in this process? May I explain a little bit? You enter this building as an official capacity, and you see other things that are illegal, or you're going to have to report, you're gonna have to report. So, when you're in these situations, you're being asked to disprove it, you may be doing a great deal of damage without intending. So, my real concern is how you make entry legal.
It's a great question, and I guess Amanda and I discussed this in, like, last month in city council, and I don't know, but she's maybe.
Because I had the exact same concern, they just have to have a public defender, so my very concern was, you know, if they're gaining access to the property, let's say through law enforcement, then law enforcement sees their familiar, it rubs me out, you know, what position are owning that one?
Awkward.
Yes. So, um, the initial hope would be that the city would be able to gain access, no issue, um, they're not mandatory reporter, so, and, you know, if they walk in and see weed, see weed out of the table, Marcus is like, they're gonna have a public call to H P D.
Or a child is in a dolphin, you know what I mean, they're, they're getting into.
Yeah, and, and, at that point, you know, I, I feel, that would probably aren't.
You see, you see what I mean?
It's looking at basic life saving. So, this is a process we kind of do now, so we can handle, you know, if a home is unsafe, we need to get inside, we expect you must provide the, and, and in this case, it's gonna be better, just, we're gonna be complaint-based, so we, somebody from inside that house can call us and say, hey, we wish you could come look at that. That's our hope here, is that we're gonna work with them, try to help them make sure they're all safe.
And if the homeowner refuses entry, uh, or, the, the, the renter, I guess, in this case, um, if, uh, they refuse entry, um, the city would have to process, uh, going to a judge, filing a petition, the judge would have to find if there is a reasonable basis for great access, because in essence, the property's a warrant.
Yes.
So, uh, basically, if we were normal, the judge would open the registration.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, I think there's a pause, this is why pause, not forced entry, right, because of that.
There's, there's.
Right, that's what, that kind of comes to privacy, what people have going on, they're on, once you get in there, there's a lot of things that can go wrong. So, uh, that's a concern for me, that if you do find a house that's completely, that they shouldn't be there, what do you do for them now?
Um, you know, there's not a lot we can do, we're gonna try to help them.
We locate, right, immediately, perhaps.
We're gonna make sure that the house is contained, which means it's not, not located, we're gonna help them get the paperwork ready, file, get their stuff out.
Do you want them back in?
With a waiver and under certain conditions, they can go back in for short periods to get their stuff out, so they don't just have to lose everything they have, you know, depending on, safety is something, if a home is actively collapsing, that's a different scenario than a home that is unsafe to live in.
But, so these are the things that parameters of all this, the concerns be, that we're taking a core process and then look at, look what a, what happens, and we don't have the tools to help everybody in situations. There are a lot of homes in this area that are, that are repaired, you know, I, I know they are unsafe, they're, you get down those foundations of older homes, they're concerning, right, they're concerning. Perhaps they can live in that environment, but we need to do some serious repairs, which we may have to move in order to do something. There's, there's a lot happening here, not just a fair amount of drugs, children, safety, there's just something thinking gonna happen next, I'll be ready for.
Yeah, so this is actually one of those we're trying to create, you know, the fact, so with, along with property maintenance, we currently have a condemnation process if your home's, if you live in our, only option is to stick a brick, condemnation sticker on it, and your recourse, if that's your home, you can't live there until it's brought back to current code, so a house built in nineteen eleven, to be bringing in, have to be brought in twenty twenty-five building, which is a big deal.
It's a huge deal.
It's very difficult, a lot of those homes end up being found, so we're trying to use this as a way to give some stepping stones, not necessarily this one by itself, but this in cooperation with property maintenance ordinance, give some stepping stones for these homes to be repaired. If it's a minor, we can get them a house right, or electrical issues, the entire home will, rather than go, if it's been brought to, whatever, you know, written inspection, the property maintenance, and if it follows the property maintenance, like, just electrical issues, brought to go.
So, there's lots of things, I, I, and I do support this, really I do, but that's a twenty thousand dollar situation, a two hundred M system must be brought in, and I, it's pretty serious.
And I'm not, I guess I'm not saying we're okay with homes not meeting code, so, just to clarify, a home that was built in nineteen eleven, if it's not changed or modified, is to be held to the nineteen eleven code, if they remodel it, then remodel apartment.
So, Navitube, right, Navitube.
So, that, you know, we have some Navitube out there, and, and it is sitting unsafe, but it's totally legal.
Yeah.
Generally, we don't chase those, unless there's a, we would encourage people to upgrade, but since it's code, it is still legal.
Of that time period.
Yep.
But once you see a two M system, it's tied into a two M X system.
Then, and if it's been modified, if you have wire splices, some wire, if you have those things, that, that could be.
I'm not trying to make this, don't let me down, but if, there's a lot going on in this ordinance, I have something interesting in it, so I just have that concern. Thank you for your preference.
And our, our hope though is this is a tool to help solve those problems before they go to bar, and now you have a home, and you have, and you're on choices, essentially legal reconstruction, in current codes, and watching.
Right, so the last comment, discretion, where is that?
Um, there is, you know. Not because there's a note there that there is discretion of the billions, but there's hardship, so there is some discretion in this, one as far as like the timeline allowed up the building inspector depending on, you know, hardships, or how secure the problem is, or if it can be solved quickly. Our standard standard would be to give somebody thirty days to solve a problem, and then there's notes in here.
I saw some timeline.
Divided, the, up to the inspector's discretion, if it would be linked, and, you know, there's a lot of examples of how, that we're not, how to get people, solve problems, we're gonna work with people rather than against them, every time we can, if no one's living in a home, there's an issue at home that makes that unsafe, you live in, you can't fix it for six months, but no one's gonna live in it, that, that can be a, a good, a good solution, and give them the time to fix it, but also not put any pressure.
Thank you for all this.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if this pertains to any property that's outside of, like, or outside of the town.
City of Terre Haute.
But, you have a, a property owner that owns, owns a house, it's a whole property owner, is he required to carry insurance on his property?
Well, the city, we don't have a wire number, so we can't carry insurance, so, I meant it, there's a lot.
Right.
Well, now, you don't have a loan, you don't worry, the house is here, so is he required to carry insurance on his property?
I think the only, I'm trying to, I think the only thing required to carry insurance.
If you had a loan.
Who gets to report? Where are you guys driving by, can I drive by a house that I don't?
Getting me any more, I mean, call you, we're, you know, we're kinda, we're, we're gonna have staff in field too, they may find things, but it's one person looking at that many properties, seeing properties making huge impacts, we're gonna look, you know, we're kind of worst first scenario, we want to solve the worst problems out there. Complaint-based, based system should help bring those to the surface and also reduce the problems people are living with, struggling with, and our citizens can sometimes be our greatest assets as far as letting us know where the problems are. And I will note, you know, any complaint-based inspection is free, we're not charging other communities to be charged for every inspection, we're not looking to be charged for inspections in this ordinance, unless there's failed inspections required for inspection, or, like I mentioned earlier, in a situation where we've had a single property or multiple major violations, we would expect that.
Marcus, you've mentioned several times complaint-based system, I suppose I'm with Ryan on, on not being a fan of government overreach and interference, and I don't believe that that's your intention at all. Which leads me to, it says the building inspector, man inspector, and if he or she has reason to believe, has reason to believe, to me, means you can pretty much do whatever you want, whenever you want, whoever they want. If it's gonna be, if you really believe it's gonna be complaint-based, then won't you strike back?
Well, we, we do wanna keep that, so, I mean, in my opinion, reason to believe does mean, but I, I've mentioned that we, we will have some staff out there that's scrapping around, but it's gonna be one person through a city, if you have presidents.
I mean, you see what I'm saying, I mean, that just, that just turns it into a completely wide-ranging.
It does, but.
And one day, you may not be there and in charge of it, and we may have somebody that's, you know, just harassing people.
We're gonna look for, for indicators of, of buildings not being maintained.
Yeah, I, I believe you will, I'm, like I say, I, I believe that your, your intentions are correct, that ordinances are, are wide-reaching, that, that, just a concern, still, still in favor of what you're doing, but, yeah.
The, the reason to believe is what, you know, Deborah said, if I can drive by a house, it's gonna have to have significant issues.
Well, there are plenty out there, we don't have one of those in the second story, and, you know, easy, easy to find, yeah. Sure, yeah.
You know, that's why our goal is to operate through order, through complaint-based system, through one-one system, we can dial three-one-one, call, and, and track that call, and follow up on it, make sure we don't miss it, we, we, we allow these calls now.
Okay.
We're looking to solve.
Right.
We're not necessarily looking. In this ord, in this ordinance. We're not necessarily looking for, in this ord, in this ordinance, not necessarily looking for, in property, looking for basic living conditions, that it's, I think, if this, uh, safe, safe alert, just to say.
Yeah. Right.
Obviously, it's, it's really hard to tell if, like, those people are just unsafe.
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah.
Probably won't have a lot of reason to believe.
Right.
On that, but probably the biggest thing we would see would be, extra, be an active, interest, if you're, if you can get in around the door, or windows, that, that would be, so. Parts of the services can't get in or out of the door, and go that way.
Sure, yeah, okay, any other comments for moving on to the plain mission? Anyone, any public comment on what we're talking about, you're probably bored to death, aren't you? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll abstain, this is, right, present.
Need a motion for him to abstain? Second it.
I'll second it.
Those in favor, aye, okay, then I'll entertain a motion on the ordinance. And this goes to the city council, this is a recommendation. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, all those in favor, aye, any opposed? One opposed, motion passes. Last item under new business resolutions, document number sixty-one, resolution number one, two thousand twenty-five, Vigo County Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance.
Here's another ordinance for you, hopefully, you, this won't be as much of a conversation, um, so, we are having to renew our, or flood hazard ordinance. Because in two thousand twenty-one, FEMA and DNR completed a multi-year, uh, review and approval of a new model ordinance. Um, every ordinance that was adopted prior to two thousand twenty-one is no longer valid due to several changes that FEMA requested to be incorporated into the new model. This is one of our outstanding issues from the two thousand eighteen community assistance visit, that needs to be resolved in order for the community to be found compliant with NFIP minimum requirements. Uh, most of the new model ordinance is the same as previously adopted ordinance, reformatted and expanded from pre-existing technical bulletin stat clarity. And another benefit to remaining in the NFIP is being allowed to join the community rating system, which has been a goal since the two thousand eighteen Cav review. There are four hundred and fifty-two communities in the, in Indiana participating in the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program, and that's including towns, counties, townships, independent communities. Um, sixty-seven are non-participating, all but seven non-participating have no flood area, special flood hazard area. Um, six have been suspended, only one in the entire state has chosen not to participate. As of right now, the towns of Riley Sealeville and West Terre Haute have been suspended from the National Flood Insurance Program, um, so this being approved will allow them to re-enter the program. A major be, benefit of the community rating system, um, is reduced flood insurance premiums for members of the community, this applies for Vigo County only, not the city of Terre Haute. Uh, community, flood insurance premium discounts in CRS communities range from five to forty-five percent, and are discounted in increments of five percent. A class ten community is not participating, and receives no discount, a class nine community receives a five percent discount for all policies, a class eight receives a ten percent, et cetera. Um, Vigo County was once a class nine community, but was removed from the program for non-compliance prior to two thousand eighteen. The intent of changing the ordinance from area planning's perspective is to make the regulations more realistic for property owners, while also following all the required state and federal regulations. There were parts of the model ordinance that were required to meet state and federal standards, but there were some that we could choose to adopt or not. The main issue that we wanted to tackle with this ordinance was that of the one-time non-substantial permitting. This regulation only allowed homeowners with houses built before the first floodplain ordinance came to effect in nineteen eighty-three to have one remodel for the life of the structure. We have quite a few older homes in the flood zones, and affect, this affected anyone who had purchased those houses, especially in the southern portions of the county. Uh, property owners can now, with this new ordinance, do a non-substantial improvement every five years. So, it would allow them, if they want, if something happens, if there's a storm, uh, they can, they can fix their house, they wouldn't be instantly required to come to two thousand twenty-five standards. Um, another chosen change is requiring an under-construction elevation certificate for the first floor of a structure, this may seem like we are adding another requirement, but it's mainly to protect small builders, or those that are building their own homes or accessory structures, to make sure they are meeting the elevation requirements. Prior to completely finishing a structure, so that they don't have to tear it completely down if it's off by two or three inches.
Does the change in elevation height?
Elevation height won't change, it's what it, it's what it is now. Nope, nope, it won't go any higher, it's exactly what it is now. Uh, the only other change from the ordinance is the FEMA requirement that, uh, we are not able to change, and it requires anyone putting fill in the floodway, only not in the fringe of the special flood hazard area. To get a letter of map amendment and submit their engineering data to FEMA, private, prior to permitting, um, and we've only had this happen once in the previous seven years, so I can't see how that could affect our community. Um, this ordinance is clear, and the requirements expels them out in a way that is easier to understand than the previous ordinance, leaving less to interpretation and making it more accessible.
Any questions for Sydney from the plain mission, on the summons? See, now, I'll entertain a motion. Goes in favor, aye, motion passes. Got a second?
Thank you.
Goes in favor, it'll be our turn.
Good timing.
Good timing, that was your alarm, wasn't it?